This is Kevin Haroff. I'm serving this year as the mayor of the city of Larkspur on Larkspur City Council. Today is September first. Quickly, the world goes by and we are starting, I think, pretty much on time. At six thirty, this is a regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. As we have done in the past, we are conducting this meeting totally online. So we welcome any members of the public to participate in this meeting. And the information for accessing us online with video is on our agenda, which is on our city website. So with that, before we get started, we'll take our roll call.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Councilmember Wayne.
Here.
Mayor Harrow.
I'm here. So I think we have the flag flying, so let's take a moment to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Everyone's on mute here. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States. America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all. So we have, we have quorum. Councilmember Way, myself. And councilmember Paulson, who just switched screens on me. So there we go. So we're started. So we'll move to agenda item number two, which is public comment. This is a time for members of the public to address the city council regarding items that are not on our agenda. Or listed as part of our consent calendar. So if there are members of the public who wish to speak in that context, this is your opportunity to do that. I will try to keep all comments limited to three minutes. So please, let's see, Allison, who might be in the queue for that?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emails, public comments. And there is no public comment.
Okay, well, that's fine. So we will move on to agenda item number three, which is presentations and proclamations. And I see we have one item on there, which is a communications update.
We ready?
Yes.
Right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and the community. My name is Shannon O'Hara. I'm the assistant to the city manager for the city of Larkspur. One of the, one of my job duties is that I'm in charge of our communications program and our strategic communications program for the city. And from time to time, I update the council as well as the community on what we're working on, what we kind of have in the pipeline and what we've accomplished. So the brief presentation for you this evening with just a summary of what we've been up to. So let me know if I can, we can enable screen share. It should be coming up any moment now.
There you go.
Are we seeing my PowerPoint?
Yep.
All right, excellent. So just to provide a brief summary for folks who may be watching the meeting, who haven't seen the previous presentations, the city adopted a formal strategic communications and community engagement plan in 2019. And since then, we've enhanced communications and engaged the community, particularly as COVID-19 public health orders and guidelines have evolved. We've grown our social media and digital presence. We've invested in new software and digital upgrades anticipated to launch in 2022, a lot of them. And we've also particularly through 2021, invested in graphic design, both software resources, as well as a lot of staff time and talent. And created enhanced graphic design and uniformed messaging across all of our departments. And then we've also particularly in 2021 as well, cross-promoted and repackaged regional information that's been provided to us for our Larkspur audience. This is everything from public safety information, information from a number of our JPAs for things like recycling, water conservation, regional projects that aren't done by the city, all of that good stuff. Just to provide some hard numbers and some metrics, particularly as I mentioned, social media and I mentioned digital engagement. Our audience size when we adopted the strategic communications plan was decent, but fairly modest. If you look at the numbers, we had a dedicated audience following, but in the past two years, we've really grown a lot of our communications platforms. If you'll look, the audience size of Nextdoor continues to grow. We've had 183% increase in our city manager e-newsletter and council highlights e-newsletter list. And we've had 40% growth in our Instagram population since 2020, which is pretty impressive across the board. And if you're wondering why some of the numbers are a little more stagnant, we're not going to get a whole lot more residents on Nextdoor unless every single person joins because our population isn't rapidly growing. And you know, the community services area, a lot of, a couple of the lists, particularly their newsletter list has to do with regular users and patrons. So we hope for that to grow. But again, there might not be as rapid growth. There are some of our newer platforms such as Instagram. To the point of the e-newsletter, there are two communications that go out regularly. City Council Highlights through our website, you can get a basic agenda accordance with the Brown Act ahead of our meetings. But for the past couple of years, we've been sending a digest of what actually happened at that council meeting, along with links to both the staff reports, as well as once we moved to, particularly once we moved to Zoom and we could get the digital recordings fairly immediately, that if there's something of interest to folks, they can just watch that portion of the meeting. So if you're interested in, you know, transitions that are happening in the city around, like any of the presentations, etc., you can just click on that. And then if you choose to watch the presentation. When there isn't a council meeting during the week, we also send out a city manager update, which is basic information for what's going on in the city that may or may not be covered at council meetings. And a lot of times that's where we deliver news from our partner agencies who don't necessarily have the same audience sizes as us, or might have a different audience, so that we can reach the most folks possible. On Instagram, I'm going to walk through the top five Instagram posts since the last time I updated you in March. Their unsurprisingly historical photos continue to be something that's really popular. This is a colorized picture of Mount, Mount Tam from 1952, was originally in black and white. Promoting our local businesses shop Larkspur in coordination with our banner program, way to support our merchants is very popular. We do Throwback Thursdays where pictures throughout our history are shown, very popular. And then we've done in coordination with both Central Marine Fire and Central Marine Police to do some posts around some of their major initiatives. So this was actually a slideshow of before and after the vegetation management plan to show folks who may know that this happens, what it actually looks like on the ground, what a dramatic difference it makes. And it really, really can put, help people wrap their head around some of these programs that when you read through them, sound very, very technical and actually see how it's affecting our community in a great way. We also, when I talked about investing in graphic design, we're at a point now where I'm pretty proud to say that most of our major communications that we put out have a strong graphic design component. Previously, we just weren't able to invest those staff resources in that time. I want to let everyone know who's watching that our budget books, the contents of it, the most important part, which are the numbers have always been great and continue to be great. It's more important than the graphic design. But we've been able to invest some time to make it a little bit more friendly for the public. If you're opening up our budget book to kind of see what there is. This year in particular, we took some basic stats for each department and color coordinated each part of the of the book so that you can see what department it is, as well as give some basic benchmarks that each department achieved as their goals and accomplishments and kind of an infographic way. What you're seeing here is our job brochure for the Community Development Director. As a side note, if anyone's interested in becoming a community development director and is qualified, or if you know anybody, this is still an open recruitment. So feel free to visit our website if that's the case. But this, this here was all developed in-house. This is all in-house graphic design components. In terms of 2021 communication goals, works in progress as we close out the year and into 2022. We're continuing to move towards central citywide communications. We're going to do a launch of the website redesign in 2022. We, we've talked about at previous council meetings, we're working on a resident survey project and portal launch that'll take place in the fall and winter in terms of the polling and then analyzing the data and presenting the data through 2022. We're going to continue to move from audience expansion to engagement, particularly as we now have these fairly large audience sizes where rapid growth may not be as feasible. As well as developing communications plans for particularly upcoming public works projects and community services initiatives, as well as finding new ways to communicate with residents and investing time in some direct communications when appropriate. As we continue to be hybrid and continue to be mindful about when we meet in person and how many people we meet with in person, we're looking to do things like out of the communications department, really make sure that we're corresponding with residents individually, if they reach out to us, picking up the phone and explaining things when possible, etc., and having that personal touch, because a lot of folks understandably are either unable to get some services in person or are a little bit, you know, reticent to, to visit us in person as we continue to try to socially distance. And finally, continue coordination and communication with partner organizations and agencies always. And then I'm going to show you a couple of previews of upcoming communications projects that we'll be having. So first, there are banners in our downtown. These will be our fall banners. They'll be going up after the Labor Day weekend, a couple of weeks after the Labor Day weekend, continuing with our themes, but with fall colors. We will be sending out a physical newsletter. We've taken a little bit of a hiatus from the physical newsletter, especially as things were changing pretty rapidly the past couple, now past couple of years, with different public health orders, etc. Going to start sending out like hardcore snail mail for folks is another way to, to reach folks. And again, the graphic design components of this are pretty robust compared to what we've done historically. And then finally, I'm going to exit out of my PowerPoint. And the other thing we're working on in terms of moving away from just audience growth into engagement is I'm going to play a brief video, which will be on Instagram, will probably repurpose it into the newsletter, etc. But this was actually filmed and created by staff. This was not a videographer and it's something that's going to promote our like adopt a bench, adopt a table program for the public. And that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that, and especially for that video closing it out. I think that creates an opportunity for many of us who have folks in mind who might deserve some recognition.
Working on the landing page and that was shot, I shouldn't mention that shot by our administrative assistant, Drew Bendixson. So I take no credit for the beauty of that video.
Well, it, it, it was lovely. And I think it does, it's a way of reinforcing opportunities for people in the community to recognize loved ones who have been part of our community over the years, but may no longer be here. And I think it's terrific.
It's a really special program. We'll be doing that for other things, especially as community services start opening up some programs, etc., to, to kind of.
Yeah, I thought that was great. Any, anyone else from the council would like to make a comment? Catherine?
Nicely done, Shannon. It's been a huge improvement in the last five years. I know you spent a lot of time working on this. I, I really, I really think that the getting consistency in our look and feel is really important. And I appreciate the time and effort you've put into this. I'm glad to see a physical newsletter because we still have a lot of, of our residents who are not as computer savvy as other residents are and/or they are inconsistent users of their technology. I know many of our seniors don't have smartphones where they can go on Twitter and other things like that. So I think it's still important for us to consider that physical traditional newsletter source. And also, if possible, the Marine IJ, if there's opportunities to put anything in there about the city. But good, good job. I really like how the banners are going to look for fall, too. Thanks.
Anything else from the council? Oh, Gabe, go.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Shannon, great work. I definitely like the graphics. You guys have a lot of talent there, you know, I think. Could hire a lot of graphic people and it might not even turn out so nicely. I was interested in one of the goals you had where you were talking about moving from expansion to engagement. And if you could just say a little more about that, you know, two thoughts crossed my mind, you know, one was what tools or methods might you use? Like I'm thinking a CRM, you know, customer relations management type tool or and then secondly, how would you measure engagement? Or how are you measuring it now? Like, do you track downloads or, you know, people responding to you and so forth?
Yeah. So the, in terms of metrics, etc. So all of the basic metrics in terms of who, you know, who looked at it, who looked at it for long, as we incorporate more video, you'll be able to see who watched the video and decided not to watch the video. We track metrics around the newsletter, particularly if folks are unsub, we haven't had this happen, but you look for these things. If people are unsubscribing, right? If people aren't interested in your content. We look at our open rate. So the open rate for the council highlights city manager update, yeah, usually hovers around 40%, which the industry standard for that is around 18 to 20% for similar nonprofit government, government newsletters of that kind. So you, you try to look at those things to see if people are actually opening up and engaging with your stuff. Also, we're going to, you know, in the beginning, we were just looking for just things that looked professional, that were relevant. And again, getting enough of an audience to where variation makes sense, right? Because if you have 10 people subscribe to your newsletter and one unsubscribes, right? Like percentages, not that they mean nothing, right? But it doesn't mean the same thing if you have an audience of a couple thousand, right? Those percentages that those, the software packages give you start to make more sense. And then also the kinds of things, both in terms of just, we've invested a lot in staff, we've learned a lot through through posting, but it used to just be that we just wanted the information out there, right? Like we wanted people to know, like, just, you know, N W D, there's conservation happening, etc. We're going to start changing the post to at like, not necessarily have people respond to us directly and have a giant comment thread, but to say like, if you looked at the, at the memorial parks and benches and stuff, they're developing public works in conjunction with our team is developing a website for that and then seeing how many people actually visited from that, right? Like linking out to other information and then seeing how much interest there was, or when you follow up, even if folks may not decide to actually go through and, you know, purchase something to at least know that the program exists or kind of know it's something we do in the community. I'm looking for that kind of, that kind of engagement. And then I don't track this in terms of like, you know, in the traditional sense of like, what percentage, etc. But on both the council highlights and the city manager newsletter, you can actually reply to that email address. It's a really nice feature and we have a small enough audience to where that's feasible. To where sometimes there'll be questions from residents that I have never heard from before. There's residents who know what we do and know if there's a pothole, like where to send it, right? And it'll get right fixed. There are other folks who maybe don't want to know where to go. And because this comes into their inbox, they send something like, what are the new library hours? Or there is like, oh, you know, a pothole here. Is it even possible to get it fixed? I actually ended up talking through someone who thought that you couldn't get a pothole fixed unless it was part of the official paving program, whereas we do pothole repair all the time. So that's just another way where you've kind of have that two-way communication or look for opportunities to have that higher touch engagement because we are a very, you know, we pride ourselves on being responsive and we're a tight-knit, small community. Also, in terms of, some things are in the brainstorm process, but if you looked at, you know, I think as as things continue to evolve and as our audience size grows, that a number of our partner agencies have also started investing in some of these tools so we can cross-promote a lot more and share audiences and share lists, etc. So that's also part of what the, the engaging committee would look like is making the committee aware of really like all the government services because, you know, we all rely on each other and provide different things. I don't know what that looks like.
Thank you, Shannon. Great job.
Okay. Anything else from the, from the council? Excellent presentation. Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work on this. As Catherine emphasized, I think in her comments, your work over the last, however long has been creating fruition and we, we appreciate it very much. So why don't we move from that on to agenda item number four, which is approval of the consent calendar? And I'll ask first if any of the members of the council would like to take any item off of the consent calendar for separate discussion. Seeing no one, I'll ask the public if any member of the public would like to take an item off the agenda for separate discussion.
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any email, public comments. And there is no public comment.
Okay. All right. Good. Well, then I'll ask for a motion.
So moved to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Paulson moved. We have a second from Catherine Way. Let's take a vote.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Councilmember Wayne.
Yes.
Mayor Harrow.
Yes. So the motion is approved and the consent calendar is adopted. So we will move on to agenda item number five, which is our city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I just have three items to briefly address. First, the follow-up to Shannon O'Hara's report. Understandably, we're very focused on our communication tools, our electronic tools, our print material. But Shannon also does the personal touch. And so I know that she went door to door on behalf of Public Works this week in the downtown corridor to discuss the upcoming ADA sidewalk and road improvement project so that people once again got to hear about it. So we also do booths on the ground and I just wanted to thank her for that effort. The other thing I wanted to make the council and the public aware of is that next week, the library will be closed on Tuesday. Is continuing recognition of Labor Day because of the way we do our schedule in the library, the off close on Tuesday. And then we actually have a staff function on Friday, the 10th. So the library will be closed part of Friday, the 10th. So a lot of signage up and there'll be posts on the internet to remind folks about that. And then lastly, I feel I should mention because it will end before the next time we meet, but there is actually an election going on and we always like to remind folks, there's an election going on and encourage them to vote. And this is an all male ballot election and we hope people will return those ballots. So that's it, Mr. Mayor, and I'll turn it back to you.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you for the reminder of our election coming up. I've, I've been inundated with emails from all kinds of sources over the last week or so, but it's, it's, it's important for people to take seriously what is happening. I think this recall process we have in California is pretty unique within the United States. And there may be other states to do it. But we do it and it's really important for people to pay very close attention and express their views through their vote. So thank you for that. We'll move on to council members' oral reports and comments.
I have some.
Go ahead.
Let's see, since last we met, I attended the Marine Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee meeting, which meets on the last Monday of the month. And assistant to the city manager, O'Hara is participates in that, too. So just two things that, what this committee does is it reviews legislation that affects the cities and towns, and particularly of interest to Marin cities and towns. Two things that they focused on was SB nine and SB 10, which are both housing bills. So I thought it was appropriate to bring that up today. Mostly because this committee and the League of California Cities both oppose those bills. However, they've both passed and they're waiting for the governor's signature. If the governor decides to veto them, I think he has until October 14th to veto. The one that the League of California Cities is particularly distressed about is SB nine, because it's a by right approval, which allows a lot to be split between potentially four and six units of a single-family home lot. And it will effectively eliminate single-family residential zoning in most neighborhoods across the state. So just today, since it just passed, they put out an immediate release statement from the League of California Cities, a CEO, asking the governor not to, not to approve SB nine and SB 10. So I thought those were important for tonight's discussion. Also, Mayor Harrow and I went to the, the Chamber of Commerce's mixer last week and both fired Chief Ruben Martin and Police Chief Michael, oh my gosh, why am I Norton was there to discuss what their roles are. And that was great. But mostly, I, I think what we can bring away from that is, is that the Chamber of Commerce Larkspur Loop is opening on Saturday, September 18th. And the Larkspur Loop is a great new walking biking path that takes you from the Smart Train all the way around in a loop through Kentfield and back through our downtown. So look it up online, Larkspur Loop, and try to show up for the ribbon cutting. I'm sure Mayor Harrow will be there to, to announce the loop. And then lastly, since emergency preparedness is something Gabe Paulson and I spent a lot of time on. And just have to reiterate, alertmarin.org, please sign up. There was a fire, a vegetation fire today in San Rafael near Lucas Valley and many alerts came out and there was an evacuation order for the part of the Lucas Valley area. So Alert Marin, I just keep pounding it into people. If you need help signing up, you can send me an email and I'll walk you through the process. But alertmarin.org and then you can sign up for all the different alert systems that we have. And hopefully we don't have any more fires. That's my report.
Thank you, Catherine, both for that final report and the reminder of the importance of people being vigilant about fire risk that we're facing. I saw the, the notices coming out today about the Lucas Valley fire and it was scary. So everyone needs to pay attention to that. And thank you also for mentioning the Chamber of Commerce mixer, which was great. Councilmember Paulson was there as well. And it was a lovely event hosted by Sam Palavan, who runs the Marriott Courtyard, which is a great facility and one that we've taken advantage of many times. So it was, it was terrific to be there. Councilmember Paulson.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to continue a little bit more with where Catherine left off on the fire safety. And I, I think that, you know, and then thank you also for the SB nine, SB 10, you know, that's definitely legislation we want to pay attention to. So reporting back from the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, you know, in light of all the fires that we're seeing and, and, you know, even today, the, you know, the alerts sitting on my phone here from the Lucas Valley fire. It's, it's pretty scary times. And, you know, we know that the, you know, summer ends, but then the windy, you know, season picks up. So the risks will continue. So, you know, thanks to everybody who's been doing their part, getting, you know, their homes inspected and, you know, participating in the chipper programs and whatnot. And hopefully we can get even more participation in Larkspur. Um, the one message I did want to convey was, you know, what, what the executive officer really tries to remind us, there are two points. One is that the, most of the fires, 99% of them are actually small acre fires. So while we're all riveted to the news and, and these things are really, you know, terrifying, you can hear the sirens sometimes at night, you know, central Marin Fire is, is out there putting out these small fires left and right. And the second point is, is really that we're finding that the prevention work we're doing is helping. So specifically, the Graceland Fire in San Rafael Hills was, was really slowed down by the fire, you know, the breaks and the vegetation management and was under control quite quickly. And the Ridge Crest Fire as well, the defensible space work there really prevented some homes from working down. And, you know, more is going on in Corte Madera Hill and, and so forth. The Friday fire there was slowed down, the one that was on 101. So again, just to reiterate, you know, we, we want to try to keep this work going and it, it does seem to be helping us and keeping us safe. And, and we are, you know, focused a lot on the small fires as well as the large fire.
Gabe, you just went muted. You still?
Yeah, no, that's it. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Good. Well, thank you for that report and thank you for, for acknowledging Councilmember Way's report on legislative matters. I think we sent out a letter on behalf of the city last week that I signed, expressing opposition to SB nine. The, the, the housing legislation that is being pushed through Sacramento is a challenge to keep up with. So we're grateful for all of the other cities. So we're grateful for all of the other cities that we are working with to express the the collective views of our of our community. So thank you for those reports. I just want to make one, you know, quick thing since Catherine kind of took the wind out of my my presentation, talking about some of the things that she talked about. One thing I just want to mention is that this is a busy time for MCE Clean Energy. So I am the city's representative on that Joint Powers Authority. And we had an audit committee meeting last week and we have technical and executive committees meetings tomorrow and Friday. And I just want to mention that the financial strength of MCE clean energy is good. In fact, it's it's excellent. The operating revenues for MCE in twenty twenty one so far booked are a little over four hundred and fifty million dollars, which is an increase from twenty twenty of about, what, thirty, thirty, thirty five million dollars for four hundred and sixteen. Operating expenses are increased as well because the cost of power in state of California has gone up with the course of the year. So margins have been stressed a little bit. But fortunately for all of us, MCE has been very prudent, I think, in maintaining a conservative financial position, preserving its reserves, in fact, increasing them over time. So the entity overall is doing just fine. The Audit Committee, which I will report on in the Executive Committee this Friday, has received a totally clean report on the finances for MCE from our auditors and I think that's that's, I don't think we've ever had a not clean report, which is very gratifying. I think it's the same for the city of Larkspur. I can't remember whether we've ever ever had something that's not clean. There's always a footnote, but it was a good audit report and I'll be presenting that to the Executive Committee of MCE, MCE's board on Friday. And that's my little comment. And with that, I think we are finished with our council members' oral reports unless there's any member of the public who would like to ask questions of us.
Looking for any raise hands from our audience members or emailed comments. And there is no public comment.
Okay, good. Item number seven is public hearings. We have none, so let's move on to item number eight. And the big one here is eight point one, which is a discussion and presentation on the development of our housing element of our general plan. So I will turn that over to our city manager, who I think will probably turn it over to Neil.
I'll just hand it right off to Neil. Go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Harof and members of the City Council. I'm gonna spend a little time tonight just giving you a brief presentation on some background regarding the housing element update requirements and process. Sort of revisit Rena, how we've got here and what we need to begin thinking about and doing as we move forward and preparing for the housing element update. That all the communities around the Bay Area and in Marin are now engaged with in in the need to have this done and over the next coming year. So let me share my screen. And here we go. There you go. Can you see that?
I I cannot yet. No, nothing's showing up.
Okay, do you have the first page?
I got it. I got it now. It just took a moment.
Okay, so I'm gonna briefly go over housing element update for the next period twenty twenty four through twenty thirty two and how it relates to our regional housing need allocation. So quickly, just to go through a some background on the housing element, I know a lot of the council are familiar with this, but for those in the audience, kind of just want to give some framework as we move into this process and discuss our next agenda item after this one. So again, as you're aware, California requires all cities and counties to plan to meet their housing needs, everyone in the community. And housing elements must be updated every eight years and must be certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And that's typically known as HCD and I'll refer to HCD commonly today and that's the State Department that oversees housing law and housing elements. Now, City of Larkspur did receive a state certification of our last housing element, which goes through two thousand twenty three. And that was approved by HCD in May of two thousand fifteen. There are different roles for what is required in a housing element. The state identifies the housing need across income groups for which a region must plan for. And we are now entering what we're calling what's known as the sixth cycle for the Bay Area, the sixth cycle housing element. Since the state started developing this process, they are now referring to these as cycles. And so the state identifies housing for the region. Our region, we're part of the Association of Bay Area Governments, the nine county collective within the Bay Area. And so ABAG is the agency that collaborates with local government and stakeholders to develop the formula and assign the share of housing to each community. So they take the state's number and assign it to communities. Each local government must then update the housing element and its general plan to show how it plans to accommodate its share of the regional need. What policies and goals it'll engage in in order to assure it can meet its housing requirements. So in the last Rena cycle, the, from the last cycle to now, the prior cycle from the state for the Bay Area was one hundred eighty seven thousand units, almost one hundred eighty eight thousand. This year, they are signing four hundred forty one thousand units to the Bay Area. And if you look at the table at the bottom, that's actually a pretty high proportion of those units are required to be affordable from very low, predominantly very low income to low and moderate incomes. So there's certainly a demand to meet that very low income category. The Rena from Marin County, Rena is the term for the regional housing need allocation. That has increased significantly. It's gone up two hundred thirty five percent since the last cycle. The draft methodology is now using both existing and future need to calculate Marin County's share. So in the past, the Rena largely relied on what was anticipated as future need. But it is recognizing there's a large gap in housing need currently and allocating that into the future with the future need as the demand. More housing is being planned in high resource areas like Marin County with a greater emphasis on equity. So it's not solely about jobs and housing linking together, but also trying to find housing in areas that have the resources and creating greater equity in that housing. The the table at the bottom shows the housing spread from Marin County in Larkspur. And if you're curious, I can always go back to the slide. And Larkspur, our draft arena has increased over seven hundred percent from the prior cycle. ABAG will issue its final allocations by the end of twenty twenty one. So we're actually beginning to do, we have to begin doing our housing element based upon our draft arena at this point because anticipating the timeframe for doing the public outreach and preparing the housing element, conducting any environmental review and holding adequate public hearings requires some urgency at this point in order to meet adopting a housing element by the end of next year.
Neil, it's Kevin. Not not to not to interrupt, but just as a reminder to people, we did authorize the filing of an appeal to that Rena allocation.
Yeah, and actually, that's that's my next item on this.
Okay, sorry.
On the slide here is, we have filed an appeal of Rena and I think shortly I'll be receiving direction on when that appeal will be heard and held. There were twenty eight appeals filed by jurisdictions around the Bay Area and certainly a number from within Marin County. The table below identifies that we have you know, gone through from two cycles ago where we had three hundred eighty two units for a seven year cycle. We actually in the last cycle went down to one hundred thirty two units. And while I think there was still a clear demand for housing and need for housing and there was certainly cost concerns, much of that Rena was based on really trying to link jobs and housing together. So Marin County actually were given some lower numbers than some other communities around the Bay Area proportionally that had more employment and employment centers. This year, our housing, or excuse me, for this cycle, our housing has gone up to nine hundred seventy nine units. And I think what is important to consider here is not just that that number is a significant increase, but the proportion of that number being very low income, almost a third of it being very low income housing as well as about a quarter of it being low and moderate income. These are affordable housing levels that are difficult to achieve through regular development. We do have inclusionary standards that allow require a proportion, a small proportion of housing to be affordable, built in conjunction with market rate, but really realizing larger gains in affordable housing is is more difficult and usually requires some form of subsidy and collaboration or funding through the state. This is the Rena timeline and where we are right now is about we're about towards the end here, down as you can see in summer of twenty one, twenty twenty one. We're now in Rena appeals. By December, we'll receive our final allocation. And as Kevin mentioned, we have appeal. The number of other agencies have appeal. While it is while we'd like to think it's possible that ABAG, and this is an appeal to ABAG and not HCD, it is ABAG that assigns throughout the region. Yet, we have to begin planning for the housing based upon what is drafted at this time. We should begin planning for that at this point and then see how the appeals takes us. I would note, the county has also appealed and they would like to reduce their numbers by a fairly significant amount. And the county would like to see some of their numbers shifted to the other incorporated agencies. So it's possible we may have more numbers. It's possible that Rena will not change at all through this process. So we'll have to see where that takes us.
And and just to clarify, Neil, because you just you you just hit on this because the county did file their own appeal. And the Rena allocation is basically a county allocation. So for for entities that choose to pursue an appeal, it's kind of a zero sum game. And it's going to be very challenging for us to be successful under those circumstances, which is going to require, I think, communities like us and other communities around the state, not just in Marin, but throughout the state to really consider how to address this issue in a more constructive way going forward in the future. But we have to deal with what we got. I understand that.
I think that's well said. And I think we'll be talking as we get into this process, we'll be talking more about how ours and other communities can collaborate to address the housing issues more effectively as as a broader community rather than sort of one by one, each community kind of dealing with their housing number, some overall numbers itself. We haven't done a, we haven't, Marin has not taken that approach yet, but maybe something we'll be considering more as we, you know, deal with these numbers. So changes from the past housing element process that have increased these numbers to this degree, certainly a total higher regional housing need is assigned by the state. Greater emphasis on social equity. There's also expanded HCD oversight on the methodology and allocation. So this will really affect this really affected how ABAG, you know, did the formula. And we do have to report that HCD was supportive of the final draft allocations in the formula that they followed to come there. Other factors had to do with, of course, overpayment, the cost of of housing in our areas overcrowding, meeting our GHG targets and the job housing balance. There are new requirements for identifying eligible sites for housing elements based on AB eight city eight six, six eight six, which have to do with fair housing and requiring that the communities really take into consideration fair housing approaches as they're developing eligible sites. So there's a variety of strategies that we should be employing. We'll be evaluating current and past housing element sites, some of which we have not used or not have not been developed and focus on choosing sites that are consistent with our general plan whenever possible. We'll have to consider implementing zoning amendments to reduce obstacles to development. This may also require to use existing sites, may require some form of rezoning or implementing by right development programs for housing projects. Will be soliciting ideas from focus groups and stakeholder committees throughout the community. And we'll be working with economic and planning consultants to promote best practices to encourage affordable housing. Again, there's a large portion of our housing demand is affordable housing. So it would be important to identify programs and policies that can really encourage the development of that particular niche or need in the community. And we can continue to expand to work on facilitating ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units to the community. Now, of course, Marin has one of the highest median incomes in the state. Yet many working families and seniors struggle to meet basic housing, food and childcare needs, lower income families, seniors, persons with disabilities, people who are homeless face significant challenges to find affordable housing within the community Marin and certainly the high cost of living and continued rise in cost of basic necessities contributes to the stress on lower income households. And especially communities of color and other other communities of you know, lower, lower income. And so this is just kind of a list of some of the factors relative to seniors. Obviously, seniors are a significant portion, a proportion of the population in Marin. And about five percent of the county's seniors have incomes below the poverty line. Seniors live on fixed incomes. So rising costs of food and housing and services certainly affect seniors. You know, families with children, about twenty three percent are living well below the federal poverty line. And certainly students in Marin are challenged and experience some form of homelessness. For workers in Marin, retail, salesperson, childcare workers, people who provide the services that are, we use in the community every day do not earn the kind of wage that they can afford to live in the county. And this, of course, adds challenges to traffic, commute, vehicle miles traveled. And even many county staff, many agency staff, police, fire, dispatchers typically have incomes that are challenging to work, live and live in this area and often drive long distances. And of course, there are racial disparities. Marin presents one of the starkest racial inequities in housing. starkest racial inequities in housing tenure throughout the Bay Area. Two thirds of non Hispanic white residents are homeowners. Roughly three quarters of both black, American and Hispanic are renters. So why do we need a housing element? Well, of course, part of why why we need it is to address the housing need throughout the community. But there are also penalties and consequences for not adopting a housing element in a timely fashion that's certified by HCD. And I'll just go through this quickly. I don't want to focus on this, but it can lead to invalidating our general plan, exposing the city to potential legal suits and attorney fees by developers, housing advocacy groups, and even the state at this point. The city can lose permitting authority for both for permits and building permits. It does reduce access to state funded grant programs, particularly for transportation and infrastructure. It can require streamlined ministerial approval for housing projects and two items I had not mentioned in the report prior on this upcoming item, but in fact, recent state legislation has increased the penalties, has added new penalties, financial penalties of up to a hundred thousand dollars per month and potentially court receivership to remedy the housing element. So what is happening now? We're currently engaged in contract discussions with our avail- with available consultants for housing element work. The county and A bag is are working together. They're prepared a county collaborative. They're providing assistance with democrat demographic information, statistics to support housing needs and programs, and also to help the local agency address equity issues, which is an important and key component for the housing element as mandated by state law and HCD. Some of the main milestones we'll be shooting for is to begin a public engagement and outreach process using websites, meetings, workshops, surveys, and again, an emphasis on equity and diversity. We'll be doing analysis of the housing needs, the constraints, creating a sites inventory and identifying draft goals, policies and programs. And as we do this, we'll be preparing the draft housing element and a sequel analysis for public hearings and adoption of the final housing element. Now, through oops, through this all, what will be important is coordinating with HCD. It's important coordinated through the entire process of the and and then into the HCD review period after we adopt the housing element, they do have a review period by which they respond and the city has opportunity to remedy or correct particular issues or items that need to be resolved, but it's very important to communicate regularly with them and make sure we're on the right track. So that review period does not result in requirements that are so onerous that we're unable to meet the timelines and have to really potentially, you know, go back to square one on certain issues or topics. So we'll be needing community feedback. Stay tuned. We'll be coming up with workshops, meetings, and housing need survey, interactive website, and outreach to underserved and diverse populations. And as you know, our next item on the agenda will be a request to consider contracting with EMC planning group for their services to assist us in this housing element process. And they certainly, part of our review for them was their emphasis on and their ability to do public outreach and address these concerns as part of the housing element process. Do you have any questions of staff, any questions for me at this time? Catherine?
Yeah, I have I have two questions. First, you said the number will be finalized by the end of the year. Will they be using the most recent census information in that? Do you know?
Um, I don't know for certain on that. I can find out if there's a likelihood they'll be using the census information to make any adjustments to the arena analysis.
Yeah, we're such a slow growth county. I just, I'm just curious whether that be will be included. My second question is, I think it's I think it's imperative that people know that in previous years, our housing requirement was just that we had to prepare and zone for possible building places. Now, this new one is going to require that these units be built during that time span or you face penalties. Is that correct?
Well, it's going to, it's it's certainly setting a higher bar for the sites and the goals and the policies to be certified as not simply accommodating the development. Having the zoning to sort of allow or accommodate the development, it has to be seen as a program that's going to facilitate the development.
But I think I think Councilmember Way is referring to discussion or veiled threats depending on your perspective that have occurred at MTC and A bag that say that you would not be eligible for key transportation funding. If you do not realize the actual construction of of the housing, I don't think that's been codified yet, but it's an ongoing discussion as a possible consequence.
Yeah, I I just think it's important that our our community knows that the expectation has been ratcheted up a lot higher than in previous years, which are which they were going to need to really engage with people to understand that this is not a hypothetical anymore. It's a much more real expectation.
Yeah, I think a good way to put it is it's not, it's not an academic exercise. This is a it's it's going to be a review process that's going to really test and and look at the sites and look at the programs to see, are you, are you, is the city really going to be facilitating and helping create the incentives to do the construction? Of course, still, the city does not develop. The city is not, you know, funded to construct sites. So this is, you know, this is new ground, and I think we're all kind of going to be working to understand. And that's part of that communication and discussion with HCD. What have they been doing with other communities that are kind of in this ring a cycle further in Southern California, Sacramento? They're they're in this, they're ahead of us in this cycle. What are the practices? What are the goals and policies being implemented there that theoretically satisfy the you know, the need for the housing element? And then on top of that, it's likely there will be continued oversight and evaluation of performance as you go. And what what will be the expectations on, you know, if in year two, have you developed twenty five percent of units or in year four, have you developed fifty percent of the units required? And what proportion is is affordable? Because they're they're sort of tracking performance, the annual the annual housing element, annual report on progress is very detailed as to units produced that year, units approved through planning, units produced and permits issued for all the various types of affordability. And then what is final? So there's a continuous tracking at this point. And then how that feeds HCD in the future and, you know, I think we'll see as an evolving discussion and evolving legislation. But that's one reason to try to make it as effective as as possible and facilitating the development that the community would like to see. How do we meet these needs in a way the community would like, so would prefer anyway, so that, you know, we are performing and not, you know, getting penalized in three, four years.
I just want to thank thank Councilmember Way for for highlighting that aspect of the issue and our city manager for providing some clarity about how the the dynamics of what might happen, depending on what outcomes we we choose. But it all reinforces, in my view, the importance of us working, as I think Neil just suggested, working with other communities around the straight around the state to make sure that we are coordinated in strategies to respond to these challenges. When we first, when I first had an opportunity, I think pretty much closely when Catherine and I got on the city council, we were addressing the housing element at that time. This, the the challenges presented by this process today are at least an order of magnitude beyond what we confronted then. Those challenges were manageable. These are not, unless we are careful about how we go about it. But it's going to be very difficult for us to do it on our own. So coordination with other cities and communities throughout the state, not just in the Bay Area, which is a process that I'm committed to, is is going to be essential. But highlighting these challenges in this context and introducing them to the public is is critically important. So I want to thank Neil for all your hard work and bringing this forward. Councilmember Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Neil, for the report. A couple of questions. One, I'm I'm wondering the, you know, the draft right now of the, you know, twenty twenty four thirty two housing element, just very roughly, you know, how complete is it? You know, would you say it's twenty percent complete or not started or halfway?
It's it's really not started. We have a housing element for the current period through twenty twenty three. And the prior housing element that, as Mayor Haroff referred to, that we adopted, started in two thousand fourteen and adopted in two thousand fifteen, was largely an update to the prior housing element. Really, an update in a very different, in a very simple and different way, an update to that document. Sort of updating the demographics, updating some charts and tables, bringing in some new policies, but really taking that document and building on it from, you know, carrying over some of the sites that hadn't been developed. The the arena number was not at at a scale that's nearly as demanding and the, you know, what what that, the public process was much more direct and simple. You know, this, I I think in unordered magnitude, as Kevin said, this this process is going to take, you you cannot use the existing hous- housing element in its configuration and makeup as a basis, as a as a really strong basis for what's going to be required for this new housing element. This is kind of starting, I don't want to say completely starting from scratch because we do have sites. We do have some of the sites and we now have a lot of information about them. But this is going to be a a a pretty different process, both doing the outreach and creating that record, creating that involvement, getting those, getting that input and then tailoring that into goals and policies and vision for the community. And and then how these sites are going to be, how we can really justify using sites that haven't been developed to date. You know, that's going to be a a larger challenge and really roll up the sleeves to find solutions.
Great. And and sort of as a follow up question, I know we're going to hear from EMC, but you know, as as someone who's really been so involved in the whole planning and building process for so many years, where where do you see the, you know, their greatest value, you know, add? Like what what part of the process? You had already mentioned engagement and, you know, the assessment of sites. I guess that would involve environmental as well as, you know, possibly economic. But in your opinion, you know, what what should we be looking for as a council? You know, for anybody, staff or consultant to complete this housing element?
Well, I think I've been impressed with their knowledge of the process and it's a process. They they've worked on housing elements in past cycles and are working on housing elements with other communities. In this cycle, they have already established a relationship with staff at Marin County and with a few of the other communities in Marin. They have an awareness of the collaborative and are included on the A bag bench as you know, there are quite a number of other. There are a number of other planning groups, consulting groups on that bench from around the community, but we know it's, you know, it's challenging. There are all the agents, all the agencies are very busy and all the consultants are busy with both existing housing element processes from Southern California through Sacramento as well as this current cycle update for the Bay Area. And this is a group that has experience and they have the, while they're working with other communities, I'm confident they have the bandwidth to really get involved and dig into Markspur and help us and really, you know, handle this project because we're going to need, as I've talked with the city manager, we're going to need a consultant that's very hands on in the process. The prior housing element was largely managed by staff with the assistance of a consultant. Some of the housing element update, excuse me, general plan update has been largely handled by staff with assistance of a consultant. We're going to need very hands on consulting group is focused on these housing issues and working collaboratively. Not just because they work with other communities, that's going to create some cross pollination of ideas and solutions, but also with other agencies and with HCD and the county. So I I think, you know, that's something to look for. Do you have experience and are you going to help the city get to the finish line in a timely manner? I I like that they're, you know, they were very upfront about communicating early and often with HCD. Get to know the landscape there and what what we really are dealing with and whether our ideas are going to work or whether we're just going down the wrong path. And that's something that's difficult for staff to do or maybe even some other consultants. I don't know, but I think that's certainly difficult to communicate regularly with the state agencies, make sure you've got, you know, someone's ear, someone's attention there. So I'm I'm hopeful that's a a a positive.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan. I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just going to say that this conversation has kind of slid a little bit into the next agenda item. And I'm just curious if if folks have any questions or comments regarding the presentation specifically on what's being planned to develop the housing element and maybe see if there are any members of the public that want to comment on that before we get into the EMC planning group discussion.
I'd like to actually do what you're trying to accomplish a little bit, Mr. Mayor, to circle back to this agenda item. And and also answer Councilmember Paulson a little bit. I've gone through a lot of these cycles. Neil's gone through a lot of these cycles and I would call them as much as they were exercises as they were, they were they were planning exercises for the community and for staff and the council. I don't want to say this is character redefining this time, but it's definitely character evolving. It's definitely talking with the community and talking as leaders about what Larkspur is going to look like, not just for the next eight years, but probably for the next fifty years. Because the ramifications in a community like Larkspur of adding this many units is significant. And so it's it's an apples to oranges question to ask what our past experience suggests for this one. This is in a lot of respects, new territory, new ground. And we, as we in a lot of respects, new territory, new ground. And we, as we transition to the next item, we need support to do that.
I think we're on the same page with that. I'll go back to my order of magnitude comment. This is really, this is new. And Dan's comments that the challenges that we face responding to these requirements will define the character of of our community and the ways in which other communities respond will define the character of their communities as well for for a long, long time. So this is an extremely important exercise and in responding to it. We have to do what we have to do because, you know, the requirements are what they are. And we will and we will do that. And Neil has done a great job in getting us started with that, and it's very much appreciated. But this is going to be a complicated, longstanding challenge for our community and communities throughout the state of California. And I go back to the comment that I made before that responding to these challenges is not going to be something we can do on our own. It's going to be a, it's going to be a response that we're going to have to coordinate with communities throughout the Bay Area and throughout the state of California, because it's going to be a really, really tough road to hoe. So unless there are any other comments on on the presentation on the housing element, we can move on.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate those comments because I think that's a a very good assessment. But I also want us to realize that this has a potential for an opportunity to be creative too. And we need to have the whole community embrace often changes like this that we might need to really rethink design ideas, maybe build up rather than out. And then to figure out how to incorporate into our community, the diversity of income levels that I make a community vibrant. So I would just like us to remember there's a flip side to the challenge, which is looking at this as opportunity to.
Yeah, and and it's not really a flip side. It's part of the challenge. And we we have to, we have to take that into account in responding to the challenge. And those are all true things. And those are all things that I think we're we're all committed to. Certainly, I am committed to diversity and expanding opportunities and creating ways in which people can join our community in a way that doesn't transform necessarily our community into something that none of us would recognize. And that's going to be the real challenge that we face here. And it's, again, it's a challenge that we face. It's a challenge that communities for throughout the state face. And we can't do it on our own. And if we try to do it on our own, we'll fail. So, anything else? Were there any comments from the public on this item before we move on to the the professional services agreement?
Our first comment will come from Jenny Silva.
Hi, Jenny.
Hi, and thanks for allowing me to speak. And I just wanted to, first of all, say, Councilmember Way, I really appreciate your comments at the end. I, you provided in the presentation a really good overview of why the housing is needed, the impact on families and and the racial inequities from the current program. I felt those points being made were really undermined by the councils. Both decision to appeal the Rena numbers and also the statements of trying to deal with this by collaborating with other cities, trying this on a bigger issue. I think this is an opportunity for Larkspur to show leadership and to, we are in a housing crisis today. We are in a terrible housing crisis today. This housing desperately, desperately needs to be built. And so rather than seeing Larkspur try to fight it, I really encourage you to embrace the housing element process and make sure that this housing gets built because Marin needs it terribly. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Anybody else in the public, please?
I mean, for any additional raised hand, we'll hear from James Home.
I'm sorry. Okay, James, go ahead.
Oh, James Holmes, Arthur. Well, this reminds me of the the old Chinese curse, may you live in interesting times. And it certainly is a curse in this instance. And I just want to say I we we are facing, in my opinion, something like with a seven, seven hundred percent increase or thereabouts with no real justification for it, we're dealing with something like a a decree from a a mad ruler like Caligula or Nero or worse. And I I don't know how we deal with that kind of irrational demands. But I think that's our our basic challenge is we're being ordered to do something which is is almost bizarre and and irrational and how we deal with it will certainly be interesting indeed.
Okay, that's it, James? Okay, good. Thank you very much for that. Allison, anybody else in the queue?
I believe in for any additional raised hand or email to public comment. And there's no further comment.
Okay, thanks. Well, I don't think this is, I don't think the 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 presentation is an action item. So unless there are other comments from council members, I think we can move on to item B, which is the professional services agreement. And we have someone joining us, Lauren. Neil, do you want to introduce Lauren and we can get started with that?
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Harof and members of the council. So before I, we we do have a couple of people joining you, joining us. I'll introduce, I'll get into introductions in just a minute. But let me kind of, what who we have joining us here is Andy Flower from EMC and Lauren Horr from EMC as well. And I've been working for several weeks now, over a month now with Andy initially discussing a collective agreement. So as as I discussed in the presentation, it's obviously important to meet the state's housing goals and even for our community to meet the housing crisis and provide greater, you know, housing opportunities for more challenged population and create some greater diversity and equity within the community of Marin. And of course, we also need to be aware of the timelines for review and certification and acceptance of the housing element by the Department of Housing Community Development. And so there is an urgency for Larkspur to initiate this public outreach phase and begin the housing element process. And as I mentioned, currently County Marin or A-Bag are they're using funding to support a Marin collaborative, which is providing technical assistance to the various agencies in Marin for general statistical and demographic data to support our housing needs analysis and also to provide demographic and data background information and some general policy framework to meet the affirmatively furthering fair housing goals of AB eight six eight six. So there's work being done right now at the county level to assist the cities. Earlier this year, staff from the county and a number of local agencies in Marin discussed putting together a housing element collective. And the concept would be using some of that state funding to support a collective approach to developing the housing elements through one managed consultant contract, thereby reducing costs, avoiding redundancy of efforts through agencies. The concept here was basically to create some shared services and collaborate on solutions throughout the county. It was hoped this approach would also create a more attractive proposal for experienced consulting firms. Agencies in Marin were not getting very strong responses from requests for proposals. Experienced housing consultants often indicated they were too busy, did not have time or resources to perform work. And earlier housing element deadlines through much of Southern California and Sacramento areas are exacerbating the lack of available and qualified firms. But luckily, as part of this, while eventually the housing collective did not come to fruition, during this process, Marin agencies did meet with EMC Planning Group of Monterey, and they made a proposal and a budget for the collective. And I, we found that very thorough and it was a well done budget and the A-Bag MTC Technical Assistant Program had also established a three qualified bench, which they were just developing up to a very recent consulting firms, of which EMC is listed as a firm to provide comprehensive services. And I'll note, Myers-Nave is one of the few legal firms identified on this bench for legal assistance for housing element issues. So that tells you it's a, it's a high bar. So anecdotally, Marin agencies have been challenged, particularly even recently in receiving responses to their RFPs for housing element support. After reviewing their initial proposal for the collective and recognizing time is critical factor, we elected to interview and meet with EMC and we required, we requested that they provide provide a proposal, which is what is before you tonight. We believe that the cost range for the update as proposed, including the environmental review, is consistent with costs other communities of our size will have or will experience. And I would like to clarify in the report that the combined total grant revenue we have available for the housing element is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars through LEAP and REAP funding. I accidentally included the one hundred thousand dollars. That's SB two funding, which is currently going towards other collaborative programs that will inform the housing element. We have provided you a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with EMC Planning Group. And this would include updating the general plan, housing element and related elements, preparing an initial study and mitigated negative declaration as an initial step to doing environmental review for this process and potentially perform additional as needed tasks, greater staff support and preparation of an environmental impact report as needed. So we're suggesting a total of not to exceed contract of five hundred ninety nine thousand dollars and five hundred ninety nine and eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I'll get that right. Almost six hundred thousand dollars and a contingency for this project. So we suggest granting the city manager authority of up to six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I do have Andy Flower and Lauren, Lauren Horr here from EMC. I've asked them to make a brief presentation on the update process, their vision for the process and answer any questions regarding the proposal. Do you have any questions of myself or Dan before we get to the consultants?
I, on page three, you talk about the staff report. You talk about looking for a collaborative approach with other Marin agencies. And then ultimately, the participating agencies concluded that the unique nature of visual visual housing units necessitated each agency getting its own consultant. How, I mean, one of the things that we discussed in this previous in eight point one A was the need to collaborate with our neighbors. Does this preclude collaboration and sharing, at least with our our contiguous neighbors? Or is that out of the, out of the element now?
I don't think it's out of the element.
No, Neil, I I disagree. I I don't think it's feasible. It's simply not. You're trying to build a process and a document that engages our community and brings us to the completion of a document that's compliant with the state directives. But I think the reason the discussion fell apart to do it collaboratively is it's not a collaborative process the way the state defined it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
But we will want to pay attention to what other people are doing. So I'm sure that's
What, what, where, you know, I mean, we could spend hours talking about how strange the whole process is from a, from a standpoint of holistic planning, but it, to the best that we can, we should be tracking what's happening on our borders because it has implications for our own thought process.
Right. And the bottom, the bottom line, that these, these requirements that we're confronting are requirements on our city. There are also requirements being posed on other communities, but we have to deal with the issues that we have to deal with. And I think that's part of what's motivating what has is being proposed here.
I think to emphasize Dan's point is it just did not, it was recognized that it just wasn't a realistic approach. There was certainly early on an idea of potentially doing a a collaborative kind of management through a single contract. But ultimately, it was recognized, you know, each agency is going to have to do sort of so much hands on and public outreach. It was not going to be practical, practical to really collaborate at that level. That doesn't mean there's not going to be a lot of idea sharing and collaboration sort of behind the scenes to understand, hey, here's here's some good practices or here's some good ideas, whether it's with other agencies in Marin County. And again, using the the Marin County Collaborative, which is providing a lot of baseline data, providing some of the, you know, some of that information to help support our process. But ultimately, it's going to have to be the community that comes up with the the vision and the solutions. And and I'm sure, you know, I've had these discussions with Andy, and I'm sure he could kind of elaborate more on where that collaboration began, can begin and ends. But and as Dan also said, this is a ongoing sort of evolving process. I think everybody's you know, scrambling to really understand, to to come up with the best ideas, understand what we have to do and what are going to be the best solutions, particularly to really create that affordable housing, you know, housing for workforce, for seniors, for disabled people. How do we get, you know, how do we get that housing out there?
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yep. And thank you for 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 pushing that issue, Catherine. Any other comments or questions before we turned it over to Andy and Lauren? Seeing none, we're turning it over to Andy and Lauren. You you guys pick who wants to speak first.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Andy Flower and I'm principal planner at EMC Planning Group. And we're delighted to be with you this evening. I apologize for my low light. I'm I'm actually on holiday in the Netherlands and I'm on the top floor and there's very little light up here and it happens before in the morning. But
Well, in that case, thank you. Thank, thank you very much for staying up so late for for us. We appreciate that.
It's it's, it's been very enjoyable, the process and working with Neil up up through this period of time. And we've learned a lot about Larkspur. I also want to begin by sharing my strong affection and connection with Larkspur. I have dear loved ones who have lived in Larkspur for multiple generations and I I spent ten years of of vacation time in Larkspur, visiting with family members. So I I do want to let you know that while we are based in Monterey, I have very strong roots there in Larkspur and and would treasure being part of the process for envisioning the future. Our proposal is tailored to Larkspur needs. Our experience and diligence and commitment with housing elements means that we're prepared to lead Larkspur to successful HCD certification on time and likely under budget using best practices. Are, we we can draft policies and programs that focus on who we serve and where the housing is located, which may lead to opportunities for how it may be funded. and where the housing is located, which may lead to opportunities for how it may be funded. Recognizing we have this challenge of the 60/40 affordable percentage, there are opportunities where we can focus on housing people who are currently employed so that we can reduce traffic and congestion. And let's see, I also, I, I want to recognize something that Councilmember Way mentioned about visioning, the character-evolving process that we're about to undergo. And that is something that EMC has, has great experience in, in leading through community engagement. And we can do that here with Larkspur. The common thread in all of this is that there's a lot of new happening. And there's also a recognition that there's a lot of new fatigue with all of what's gone on with COVID in this last year and a half. So the team that we have, that we're bringing together can work through that and, and truly engage the community so that the vision is something that everyone can feel connected with and excited about and recognizing the opportunity through this challenge. The housing element cycle expectations are, are definitely brand new and, and our firm and, and us personally, we are, we are longstanding pioneers for new territory. So we're, we're certain that we can help connect the dots on, on what needs to be acknowledged by HCD. We have, we have staff who have had longstanding relationships with HCD through some very difficult, I'll call them catch-up housing element cycles in the past. So I, I guess when I'm, the point I'm trying to make is that we have had opportunities to, to work through difficult scenarios that jurisdictions have found themselves and, and have, have come out with, with flying colors so that we've been able to work with HCD to come up with solutions. We're confident that EMC is a good fit for Larkspur. We are focused with energy for the sixth cycle in the Bay Area, including Fairfax. We're also working with a couple of other communities here in Marin and just finalizing some details for contracts with them. We're also working in Santa Clara County with multiple jurisdictions, including Montesereno and and Los Gatos and Larkspur is exactly the size of community that we're accustomed to working with and that we're able to tailor and, and successfully manage a, a project through completion. I mentioned that we're likely to come in under budget and that's because one of the new things is Ambag's involvement. And I, I want to clarify, we were part of what was considered a collective, but what is still available to us is the collaborative. So we do have part-time technical assistants available to us. And the thing is, is that it's, it's still an ongoing process how they're rolling that out. So for somebody to be successful with this six cycle housing element, you have to be able to pivot and flow. And that's something that our staff and our team is very adept at. So I, I want to bring this thought to you, that the idea that, that we're going to find solutions together through this process and that it's important that you don't have a, a consultant who walks in the door and thinking that they have all the answers. There's, there's truly a lot of opportunities for, for the character of, of Larkspur to evolve in a way that, that is meaningful and appropriate and that serves the needs of those who are particularly those who are already part of your community, those who are employed there now. So that's something we would like to do with you. And one thing I want to make sure of is that if, if we do have the pleasure of moving forward with you, we, we definitely want to use this opportunity this evening to ask about your advice and suggestions moving forward. I'm also open to questions, Lauren and I both.
Kevin, I'll be right back. I have to run and get my power cord. I'm about to expire my battery. So I'll be right there.
Fine. I just had to unmute myself because I was muted. And thank you very much, Andy, for, for that presentation. And I would just wanted to invite Lauren. If you had anything you wanted to independently add to that, that, that talk.
Sure. I'll just add that and reemphasize that, you know, with the high expectations of this recent Rena allocation, you know, HCD is really looking for creative solutions. And I think we at EMC pride ourselves on not being a consulting group that provides cookie cutter approaches. We really like to be hands-on in our community outreach and not just make it a one and done, but truly an iterative process where we come back to the community as we continue to develop our plans and we can, in that way, you know, very specifically tailor our approach and our development of the housing element update that is truly aligned with the wants and needs of the community.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. Okay. Any questions from the council on, on what we've heard? I think I saw Councilmember Paulson had his hand up first. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Thanks, Andy and Lauren. It's great to meet you. And I, you know, tried to get as much of an understanding of EMC and your backgrounds as I could. You know, maybe just starting with Andy. I, you know, I, I just wanted to ask a couple of technical questions. On the proposal, there's the, the billet or the role for principal planner, which is about 602 of the, you know, total hours, I'm assuming about 2,000 hours, you know, to get the job done. Would that be you? You're, you're the principal planner then?
That's correct. We do have, we do have a, a couple of other principal planners who may participate as well, but it will be primarily me. Yes.
Okay, great. And, and that being said, I'm, I'm really curious to get to know a little bit more about what you've done. So I, I believe you just joined EMC this year and that you worked in Monterey for some time as a planner and then also in Lake Forest, Washington. And, you know, if you could tell me a little bit, I guess Monterey is, is about two and a half times the size of Larkspur and you know, completely different situated and all that. Some of my big concerns, you know, I guess this is what comes with actually being involved in the project, you know, you can't you know, say what you're going to do for Larkspur, even though you did a lot of vacation here. But maybe, maybe you can just give some idea around the areas of affordability and mixed use since you seem to have spent a good bit of time in mixed use. And, you know, where at a very high level, you see creative solutions. You know, so I think about upzoning, I think about, you know, converting different uses and so forth. You know, if you could just give us some very broad outlines, since you're probably going to be one of the principal people involved in this.
Well, I had the good fortune of having some field walkthroughs with, with Neil Toft. Thank you so much for that. And I'm excited about numerous opportunities. I want to be very cautious about sort of putting the cart before the horse. I, I'm, I'm truly a person who, who likes to assess all of the strategies available and then bring that to the public in a way that's not too heavily weighed. My preference is to have an informed public and of course, informed decision makers, but that when we bring those options to the decision makers, that part of the information gathered is the community input about those sites and policies and programs. Of course, gosh, I, I want to be very cautious about talking about specific sites. But generally, there's certainly opportunities for mixed use, I would imagine. And, and generally, I would say a, a focus on multifamily is much more likely than to, to do anything about expanding what's, what kind of opportunities there are at expanding single-family areas. I should say, expanding density within single-family areas. Instead, to be focused on multifamily and finding ways that, that the character that exists at Larkspur can be heightened. And of course, your work with the odds, the objective development and design standards will be a huge component in facilitating that.
And I really appreciate your, you know, sensitivity around not putting the cart in front of the horse. And then I also realized that, you know, we are at a point of inflection. We're talking about past experiences and that relevant. But, you know, to the extent that you can, you know, is, are there any things that you could talk about, you know, in Lake Forest or in Monterey that apply here? Because that, that's a safer ground to tread, I think.
Sure, sure. Well, I was able to bring some overlay zoning into the, into the city of Monterey. And with unanimous approval through both Planning Commission and Council with ideas of having a, a density cap for a particular area. So that, this is just an idea of a tool that, that can be seen by developers as incentivizing and sort of, if it's a first come, first serve opportunity, then they're incentivized to, to maybe step up to the plate. Property owners may see that as a signal that now's the time to embark on, on development that suits the needs of the community. And so when something like that is, is paired with policies and programs that incentivize the kind of development that is desired in the area, then, then that can that can meet several needs at once. And, and that's, that's really often my focus is how, how can we, how can we find win, win solutions really is basically what it comes down to.
Thank you very much.
Catherine, I think you had your hand up.
I appreciate you being here at four thirty in the morning or whatever time it is there. And if Lauren wants to chime in too, because you look like you're in Monterey, so, or close by. You know, one of, some of the concerns we hear particularly about Larkspur is that we are in the wildland urban interface and we're in the middle of a drought. And I get a lot of comments about how can we be expected to build when there isn't very much buildable land left? And a lot of our community also, or some of our community is on the Cordera Creek, which is in the floodplain as sea level rises. So how do you, how do you consider engaging with communities that have those three main fears? That there's not enough water, there's not enough buildable land, and there's wildfire.
Those are great questions. And that's certainly, those, these are questions that are also being raised in Fairfax where we're working. And we have a number of webinars that are on our calendar here in just this next coming month so that we can be engaged and understand more specifically challenges and opportunities related to housing with, with certainly a lens for social justice. We want to make sure that any affordable housing that will be built in the future, that we're not exasperating these kinds of equity issues. Lauren, would you like to add?
Yeah, we also, ABAG has a tool called the Hess Tool, which can be helpful with looking at different environmental constraints. And that's definitely going to be part of our public engagement process as well to, you know, confirm those concerns. And it's something that's, that we take very seriously in how we develop our site, you know, potential list of sites. And like Andy was saying, we, we don't want to put units somewhere where it's just going to create a future problem down the road. It definitely needs to have a long-term outlook on, you know, being a a good place to put new development for the short-term and long-term.
And then my last question is, we, you know, our, our population is an older population over age sixty-five, the majority of Larkspur Greenbree residents are. And while I recognize that tremendous need we have for workforce housing, and I think Ms. Silva spoke to it earlier in our public comment period of time, a lot of the people I hear from, they really want to leave their single-family home that they raise their children in and come down to the city center area where it's a more walkable environment and access to their doctor or whatever it is because they're a little frightened of being up in the canyon or up in, in the areas where it may have been great to have the, the big family home. How are we going to, how do you anticipate outreach to sort of our senior population? That may not be as computer savvy or as interested in attending nighttime events or other things to assess what their needs are and their thoughts are?
That's a great question. We would definitely like to work with postcards to help engage folks and find, find, we'd like to go to the community. We're working with a, a senior group in Fairfax right now. And they're doing great work to help connect to older adults within their community. We know that they meet regularly at the library every Friday, so we're planning some events there. And, and so we would like to get connected in with the community and, and hear about ways that we might be able to work directly with those who are already organized, but also find ways and inroads to those who don't regularly get involved in these kinds of visioning opportunities is really what it is. And it makes a difference to be able to age in place and to age in a place that is of your community and, and to make available the home that, that you've raised your family. And that's, that's, that's a win-win right there. And we, and Lauren and I worked together in Lake Forest Park. And this was, this was a overriding need in that community. And we, we were there just as the town center was going to be redeveloped. And of course, once you put an elevator into a building, you've automatically made those units much more accessible for older adults and into the future. And a similar thing could be considered in downtown Larkspur.
Thank you. I, I'm looking forward to hearing more about it as we move forward. I have a lot of thoughts on this process. Having had aging parents who decided age in place and having to be working on age-friendly Larkspur process right now. There's, we have a, a real opportunity to engage community and how we can fully embrace all the people who want to live here because it's a wonderful place to live.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else from the council on this? Councilmember Paulson here.
Yeah, thanks. Just one follow-up question. You know, Andy or Lauren both, could you talk a little bit more about D and your processes with them, your relationship with them? You know, because that does seem to be a critical, you know, piece of, you know, whatever we vision or strategize, you know, we got to kind of work with them too. So.
Yes, well, our, our firm, like I mentioned before, we have worked with them directly throughout processes that were especially tumultuous, working with community that, who was was not certified and helping them to get back on an eight-year cycle rather than, they were then relegated to the four-year cycle. So we've done, we've helped communities create two cycles in one essentially, and working with HCD through that process. So our, our plan will be to, to work with HCD and to certainly provide for them a draft as, as early as possible so that they can, so that we can get feedback from them. Now, we've also been paying close attention to the feedback that HCD has been given to those those cities that are in Southern California. those cities that are in Southern California, whose cycle occurred earlier than yours. And and the feedback that we're seeing most often when when communities are expected to make major major revisions is when their equity analysis is not aligned with their meaningful strategies. So that's why we want to make sure that we have thorough community engagement, that we have an equity education component and and that we integrate all of what we understand about the needs for equity within Larkspur as we're brainstorming and coming up with and listening for communities' direction and councils' direction on what meaningful actions we want to include with our housing element.
One one last follow up question. It seems like EMC, you know, was largely environmental and environmental impact reports for many years and has recently gotten into the housing business. Are you one of the key principal planners? Are there other people? Because I see on our proposal, there's 16 people on the bench. I'm trying to get an understanding of, you know, their depth and their experience and, you know, how much they've done with this.
Well, we have had, we've got two principals who have been working on housing elements for the last two to three cycles. So while we're best known as an environmental firm, we have been working on housing issues for for many, many years. For me personally, I I I'm there's a great planner that I I studied while I was in grad school, Catherine Bauer Hauser. Housing has been a huge focus for me throughout my education and throughout my experience as a planner. But we also are partnered with several sub consultants who round out our team and so that we can make sure to address all of the needs for this unique housing element cycle. One thing that we're hearing from other other consultants and even among our own partners is is that this really is is such a unique animal, this cycle six housing element, that even if if you were the top firm in housing elements up until now, you wouldn't necessarily be entirely prepared for what's to come. I I think our our biggest qualifier right now is that we're ready, willing and able to to, you know, focus pivot and flow and just really continue through the process of developing this housing element that is in keeping with Larkspur's personality and character.
Great. Thanks, Gannan.
Okay, any any other questions? Catherine, you look like you were on the verge, but I guess maybe not.
No, I'm I'm I really appreciate your comments and the staff report was very comprehensive and I have a lot of trust in Neil and also with our city staff that they vetted this agency very well. So unless you have public comment, I'm ready to make a result to make a motion.
Okay, well, let's see if let's see if there's any members of the public who would like to provide any feedback on this.
The first comment will come from James Holm.
Go ahead, James.
James Holm starts for three, three comments. Number one, given that the HCD has sort of set this up as was stated as something of a zero sum game where one community's gain is another loss. I wonder if a consultant serving other communities in Marin County could actually lead to some sort of a conflict of interest between the interests of Larkspur and and other communities. And that the consultant would have to to navigate. And number two, historic preservation is also an important consideration in Larkspur. And I I wonder to what extent the consultant has dealt with issues relating to accommodating historic preservation with some of the other considerations, densification and otherwise that we're going to have to be grappling with in this housing element cycle. I would assume that historic preservation is significant factor in in Monterey, but in any event, it it hasn't been been mentioned. And I I would like to know how that consideration would be would be taken into account. And and third, I wonder what is the source of the funding for this consultant? Was it part of the previously approved budget for the for planning and building? Or is it going to come from from some other source from the the reserve like the the polling consultant the last time and or or what is going to be the the source of the the funding for this? Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anybody else in the public?
Looking for any further raised hands or email public comments. And there's no further comment.
Okay, well, great. Well, thanks. And thanks. Thanks, Andy and Lauren for your presentation and Andy for your being available to us in the wee hours of the morning, at least from our perspective, maybe for yours as well. And I know Catherine, you're right, you're ready to to make a motion. I think there's a lot. I'm sorry.
I actually, I I think some of the things Mr. Holmes brought up, conflict of interest and historic preservation, I just want to hear what your comments are on that.
Okay.
Because I because I I know Mr. Holmes is very concerned, is very involved in historic preservation. And, you know, we do have we are a downtown that's on the historic registry. So just want to know what your experience with that.
Can I first?
Sure.
There is not a conflict of interest.
I understand that.
The consult, we have many consultants working on issues around planning and housing throughout Marin for multiple jurisdictions. And the zero sum component's over. It's not part of the exercise that EMC is being retained for. The zero sum was the allocation of the units by ABAG. But I'll I'll let EMC answer about the historical component.
Although I just I just add during about the conflict of interest issue that that even if any agencies appeals result in an adjustment in the numbers, EMC or any other consultant is just going to work with the numbers that are handed down. Their their work is with a a delivered universe of of numbers.
That's a good expression. I appreciate that.
And anything that they do for Larkspur or any other consult or any other jurisdiction is not going to affect that number. So I I don't see how their work would in any way for for multiple agencies would be conflicted in terms of the work that they do, resulting in numbers being shifted to another jurisdiction.
So that being said, I appreciate that. So I'll retract my question and just ask whether you've worked with historic preservation designated areas before.
I, yes, yes, we have. I can also tell you that I I earned a certificate while in grad school for historic preservation. I'm currently on the Historic Preservation Commission in the city of Pacific Grove. And I I work diligently around historic preservation in in the city of Monterey, including while working on the overlays that were to increase housing production.
Thank you. So I'm ready to make my motion if you would like that, Mayor Harrah.
So actually, I I was going to suggest before you make the motion that we maybe partly because we're lacking a full slate of our city council tonight. And this is a fairly significant contract that we're we're contemplating. So my my suggestion would be to maybe put this off to the next meeting to give an opportunity for those folks to express their views.
Um, from reading the staff report, I I felt that time was of the essence that that and I see Andy kind of nodding his head, but it looked like time is of the essence and the staff report indicated that the opportunity to to get qualified contracts with to get contracts with qualified consultants is a very narrow window. So I'm hesitant.
Maybe I can ask the our city manager whether we we have time to at least take that additional opportunity.
Time is of the essence, but I think we can defer to the next meeting in September.
Well.
I think I think I think that would be a desirable thing. You Catherine, if you want to go ahead and make a motion, feel free. But I think that just given, you know, the we do have a quorum tonight, so we can make a decision. But the the amount of money that's involved here is not trivial. And I think it's important to have a full engagement by the council on this.
Well, while I appreciate that, I still think that time is of the essence. And I've read the staff report and realized that there are a lot of other cities that are looking for qualified consultants to help them this with this very complex matter. And the fact that we have a current planning and building director who is retiring at the end of the year, I think we need to marshal all of our resources to get this on board. So I would move Resolution 5121 from the staff report.
Okay, well, then I guess we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I think I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Then we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Harrah?
No. So I think we have a majority of council members present here tonight voting yes. So that means I think the motion passes. So thank you very much. I think that kind of ends that item for discussion tonight. And I just want to thank again Andy and Lauren for your participation in this. Wherever you may be, we appreciate your involvement and and investment in the discussion with our our community. And I think with that, we'll conclude this item. You guys can go to bed.
And I'll I'll just express that I I look forward to working with Andy and Lauren on getting this process moving. I I think, as we said, it is it is time is of the essence and there's a lot of public outreach to begin. And, you know, creating help, helping create the community vision to solve this challenging issue. Thank you.
And on that note, I'd like to, if the in the mayor, if the mayor is up for this, I would be offer my services to be a council member to help support them in this endeavor.
I think there are, there's already a committee, isn't there, Neil?
Yes, we have a, we do have a housing steering committee to begin getting engaged in this process. And that's just steering committee. That's not going to be, there's going to be focus groups.
Can you remind everyone who the
On our on our committee is Mayor Harrah and Councilmember Paulson. And we also have Commissioner, Counselor and Chairman Wagstaff.
Fabulous. Great.
I'm the commissioner.
Hey, thanks. Thanks for that, that those additional comments. Appreciate it very much. And now you can go to bed. Thank you very much for your participation in in the meeting tonight. We appreciate your your investment in time and and willingness to be helpful to us.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
So with that, I think we'll close that item out. And we'll move to our last item on the agenda, item number nine, which is adjournment. Can I entertain a motion?
I move adjournment of the meeting until our next, which is September 15.
Second.
And seeing no objections, the motion is approved. And I wish everyone a good night.